Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of International Falls for Monday, April the 18th, 2016. I know the clock behind me hasn't reached 4:30 but the one in front of me has and so we're gonna have to get these clocks synchronized better than... And so I'm gonna call the meeting together at this time and I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the administrator to roll call with...Councillor Briggs is absent, he is out of town. We move to the agenda and we have two additions to the agenda. First, under item number four, under the consent agenda, and that's a 2016 license application for a massage therapy license. And item number five, under new business, is an additional item that's been added and that's Committee of the Whole recommendation to approve agreement for firefighting service between the city of International Falls and the Rural Fire Protection Association. With those two additions, your pleasure with the agenda.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kayler to approve the agenda with the two additions.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Question?
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the April 4 regular city council meeting. Your pleasure with those minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Councillor Jackson to approve the minutes of the April 4 city council meeting. Second by Councillor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved. And also, under minutes, we have the April 14 Committee of the Whole meeting, summary of that meeting also, and your pleasure with those minutes.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Drogba to approve.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jackson. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried and the minutes for April 14 are approved. Thank you. What are the resolution on the payment of claims for the accounts payable and the transfers? We have transfers to Fund Number 101, the general fund, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,715, to Fund Number 401, permanent improvement, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $16,668, and to Fund 403, reserve for capital outlay, from the Water and Sewer Fund, $17,428. We have accounts payable claims for the city of International Falls, $279,518.92, airport commission claims of $15,539.93, and library board claims of $8,313.63. Your pleasure with the transfers and the payment under the accounts payable.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councillor Jackson to adopt the resolution to approve the transfers and the accounts payable.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Kayler. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
I just have to note that the general fund balance at the end of March was $1.7 million and the council should be appraised to the fact that that's the cash balance. That's pretty close to what the fund balance is, but we have a stip that our fund balance can't go below 50 percent of our annual budget in the general fund. And I think that before we get to the end of June when our receipts come in, we may go below that. So, we may have a problem here.
It'd be a temporary situation until we receive our monies from the county.
But we do have a resolution, though, and we...I guess when we pass a resolution, we're serious when we do that and so we may have an action to take.
Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the transfers and the payment of claims are approved. Thank you. Anyone in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council at this time that's not on the agenda?
Several issues. I've come here about garbage in the 5, 8th Street and...I go through there, now that the garbage are still there. Light in the front yard at 719, all light behind the garage. And also in our travels, on 6th Street, 7th Street, in the alley there, there's a total of five cars in that alley. I don't have enough data license on them. Down there's another car and there's no license. It's called two blocks. And that's part we went. But I don't see why you knew. It's been a hundred and three months now that that car is...no, we've done nothing with it. I see an article in the paper that they were gonna get somebody around cleaning up. Do better not. I haven't been sighted, you drive down to there. One area, another area.
Hey, I do know that the building inspector has been notified and...
They've not cleaned up, you know, for the article in the paper. It's all the stuff they...
Oh, that...
What they got driving around looking at these...cleaned up, tell them now they're gonna get somebody to do it, but they kept all the garbage away. Vehicles in the yard, I don't know why they kept all the garbage away. Cracking near, buckets in there with garbage and vinegar. And then behind me, there's lots of light waiting all over the yard. Hard to get cleaned up, that area.
I think you're absolutely right.
Also, I mentioned to the police, that one vehicle driving on the old blue pickup, they brought a spring in the back and the box is just behind the cab. Now they love the things like that on the road. You just stop by the one, do you? If I do, driving around with the teamwork, literally. I moved over here from Canada in 1999. They told me, "Pick up over here because it's rough." And that was mechanical, because then after a few minutes, it's done. But that was the guys, the customs told me, "You could bring it over here." They don't have the right to say that either.
I like...yeah, that's...they might not have the right to tell you that either, but I know the officers are familiar with the truck and they're the ones that know whether or not a car is able to be on the road or not and they're doing their job and I'm not gonna sit and listen to you talk about the police anymore. They're doing their job and they're doing the best they can. I'm not gonna listen up to it anymore. No more, no more. I'm not listening to it.
The pickup was still driving on Canada, they could take it off and run it away.
Well, this isn't Canada.
And I think the chief did say that in May that they would be conducting a review of the community and giving out tickets at that time.
Maybe the city police gotta do that for it.
I guess I'm not sure that I understand if someone has a broken spring, if they're allowed to continue to drive or not. I don't know the regulations.
But the car's in the back, it's in the blocks.
Just because they're not doing the job you want it done, doesn't mean they're not doing their job, just because you're not getting the results you want. But we're not gonna talk about the police and their lack in doing their job, 'cause they are aware of the blight, they got other things to do and they're getting on top of it. I know they're aware of the truck. And I might wanna hear about the truck anymore, 'cause I know they're aware of it.
And then on 7:05, I know that the building inspector has issued a notice to those folks. I don't know how long they have to get that cleaned up, but he is aware of it and told me that he's working on it, so we'll...there are regulations that we have to go through in enforcing some of the statutes and ordinances that we have, so... Thank you, Don, for your concern about the community and blight. Others in the audience that wish to approach the council at this time that are not on the agenda? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional audience participation. Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda and we have resolution for the Public Employees Retirement Association Declaration for Part-Time Patrol Officer for Brett Musich, a resolution for the declaration for Patrol Officer Jill Ulrich, resolution for the declaration for Part-Time Patrol Officer Kalen Schneider, and the year 2016 license application for La Spa Massage Therapy Wendy Arnold, and that's an individual massage license. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
I'll move on the agenda, or on the consent agenda.
Motion by Councillor Drogba to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Kayler. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. We'll move to new business. Item number one under new business is to adopt the mayoral proclamation proclaiming May 2016 as Mental Health Month and approve advertising in the journal as requested by the Cooching County Public Health and Human Services. Bruce Mattson is not accompanied by Angie Mastin. Callie, do you wish to speak to the council? Okay, if you'd come up to the front. Bruce?
I just wrote a little bit all about my blessing to be in this mental health system and how it's been helping me and how my health has greatly improved and I remember growing up and having a mental illness at the age of six. I was the only one in my family with a mental illness. But back then, nobody knew anything about mental illness that night at the school. I was never questioned by the teachers, they thought I was shy. The teachers and the kids in school didn't understand, so I pretended to be normal as much as possible, like every kid that went to basic school. Over the years, I have figured out how to manage my mental illness, thanks to people like Dr. Kessler, who has passed on, Dr. Jeff Hardy, Dr. Johnson, Stafford Northland, Compton, Senator Joan Christians, who retired, was excellent, and Bill Johnson, who's still at the council, I think he's a leader there. These are greatly responsible for my success and for a lot of other people that have a mental ill and overcoming obstacles and being able to live independently of the community. The Hardy College has always been a great comfort to me and it's been going on for several years, five years now. It's nice to have somewhere to go and visit with other people that understand you, because they also have the situation too. The CSP workers, armed worker staff, the Hardy Club, the law, confident, help me when I needed that. I enjoyed it when they were nursing, turns out the Hardy Club, I could help them to learn more about this illness so that they could understand and be able to use it in hospitals. I liked doing that, like somebody else, not well, since there have been no room for me there, I was younger, I depended on the system, but I also was able to work for many years in the mill, with the illness, but under control of a lawyer, of some medicine. So I was very blessed to be getting five years in the mill, well, not a lot, but enough for a pension. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great statement, Bruce. Thank you for making that and highlighting this proclamation.
I'll move on the proclamation.
Motion by Councillor Drogba to adopt the proclamation.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Jackson. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation.
Thank you, Bruce, for bringing the presentation to us and speaking to the proclamation so well. Really appreciate it, so...
I would like to also commend him for that, 'cause I know what it's like. There's people that you don't know that need the mental health services and you don't know who may have some problems and there are resources out there. So go get it if you have any problems and I can speak of...I'm speaking of what I know 'cause I'm one of those people that have suffered with depression and battled and people wouldn't think of it that know me or see me, but there is help out there and if you have a problem, go talk to somebody. It's very commendable that you come up here and tell us your story.
Actually, on a lighter note, I think we have some presidential candidates who maybe need help.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried and proclamation is adopted. Thank you. We have a second proclamation proclaiming April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and approve the advertising in the journal as requested by the Friends Against Abuse.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillor Kayler, second by Councillor Drogba, to approve the proclamation and the advertising. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation.
I guess there's nobody here from the board, so I'll speak to that, I'm on the board. And it's an agency that's been in existence, I think, now for 30 years and the city of International Falls works closely with the police in domestic abuse cases and also now sexual assault and is very, unfortunately, a very busy place, but appreciate all the support from the city on this.
Very good, thank you, Councillor Jackson. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion is carried and proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Item number three under new business is a request for the use of Smokey Bear Park and the sponsorship of the International Falls Bass Championship to be held at Smokey Bear Park, August 25, 26, 27. Mr. Joe Best and Susan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. My husband and I both sit on the International Falls Bass Championship Board of Directors. We're here representing them today, asking for the use of Smokey Bear Park and your continued partnership in the event.
Great, looking forward to another one. This is the...what annual, do you remember right off?
This is the 11th annual.
11th annual, thank you.
Oh, yes.
How many years already? It's been...
It's a council's pleasure with that request for sponsorship and the use of Smokey Bear Park.
I will make a motion to approve that request.
Councillor Jackson to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the sponsorship or the use of the park.
I'd just like to say that it's events like this, the Bass Championship, Icebox Days, anything that draws people to our community is a huge asset for the area. Being a small area, we have limited resources and by bringing in people from outside the area, even if it's for a weekend, it's a huge asset for our community. So thank you guys very much for bringing in people from all over the country to our little area. Thank you so much.
We really look forward to this. Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion is carried, sponsorship and use of the park are approved. Item number four is a request from the Rainy River Community College and the partnership of the Cooching County, Cooching Economic Development Authority, as well as the college, to participate in funding in the healthcare initiative with a $20,000 contribution for each of three years of 2016, 17, and 18.
Remember, I'll move on the motion?
Motion by Councillor Drogba to approve. Second of the motion. Second time, is there a second of the motion? As a member of the council, I would second the motion. Request is before us, let me give you a little background. The nursing program at Rainy River Community College has been operating for a number of years as, under the sponsorship of a task of community college. A number of the classes are offered through the telecommunications system at the college. The students that are active in the...participating in the classes, their numbers are all go to a task of community college. They are not credited to Rainy River. As the letter points out, Minnesota State Colleges and Universities has invested $311,000 in a very, very beautiful lab at the college and that has been covered by newspaper articles. The college has heard from the industry here in the community, Good Samaritan, Essentia, and Rainy Lake Medical Center, that they have a need and there's a shortage of nurses for this area. So a partnership was put together to help keep the class at Rainy River and there are 24 potential students this year that would like to attend. If the college could secure an instructor with a master's degree in nursing, the community college here could deliver the course and all of the students would be counted towards Rainy River Community College. College and partnership have put together a request to the healthcare industry participants, Rainy Lake Medical Center and Essentia, as well, they have asked the county and city. The county has agreed and contributed money to this effort and it's hoped that we are able to have Rainy River hire an instructor for this coming year in 2016, 17. Some of the background. Further discussion with regard to the request for Rainy River?
Looking at it from the budget, I mean Cynthia pointed out earlier that, you know, we are getting dangerously close to our financial obligation of keeping half the money in the account. $20,000 this year seems to be the big stickler for me. Going forward, in the next two years, we can budget that through our Budget and Finance Committee, but as of right now, I guess I would be concerned for the $20,000 for this year. But I want to be very clear, we constantly are talking about, we need jobs in this community, we need jobs in this community. We've identified that there's a problem, but we don't have nurses in this area. This is a way to, A, get a person with a master's degree working at our college, and B, getting our nurses in our area that would potentially stay immediately after graduating the program. It's working with the county, it's working on economic development, and if we can figure out a way to come up with the $20,000 for this year that just doesn't come out of our general fund, I would be more than happy to support this. That is my concern at this time.
I would just like that. I'm a very proud graduate of Rainy River Community College, it's the best thing that ever happened to me and people like me that didn't want to know what they wanted to do when they grow up. Of course, some people might say I'm still struggling with that, especially the grown-up part, but I have no problems with that. I'm worried about the $20,000, where are we gonna get it and what other essential things that the city needs is gonna suffer from that $20,000. I guess it's something we gotta weigh what's more important. And what about the other institutions in town? Have they offered up to contribute money to this? The Rainy Lake Medical Center, Essentia, Good Samaritan, all good facilities, all good places. That's five years of my life with my parents, were their last five staying at the Good Samaritan Center. It has nothing to do with that, just I don't know where we're gonna get the money from and what kind of precedent are we setting and what about three years from now?
If I may respond to that first. Before you is the Voyage Forward Budget Review and the Economic Response Leadership Team has been working with the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission and with the Northspan Group, because we had contributed, each, the county and the city contributed $100,000 and we received $200,000 from the Department of Commerce. Actually, we each put $138,000 in. As of a month ago, the ARDC said that there's $61,980, that's on the fourth page of that handout, that was left. Now, there was monies to come out of that yet from the meeting of the Voyage Forward Group, when they had the community meeting, the expenses for that. There was also the expenses for the retail analysis presentation last Wednesday. There's a little bit of time that ARDC, Josh Bergstedt, and Northspan's Randy Lasky have put in since the first of the year, so best guess is that this is gonna be somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 that will be left over on the Voyage Forward and that would be divided between the city and county, so expect that we would have something in the area of $20,000 plus for each entity. And it would be there that I would request that we take the funds for this year and that we would look to budget those funds in the next two fiscal years. Councillor Jackson?
I have a problem with...and, you know, the thing is, is that I support the college. In fact, I've contributed and set up a fund there, scholarship fund. So I support the college and I voted at a council meeting to donate, I think it was $10,000, to the community college to set up the Frisbee Golf Course, which is an added amenity to the citizens at large as well as college students. So I support the college. The question is, is this an appropriate kind of funding we should...arrangement we should enter into? Number one, the community college is part of the Minskew system, which is state-funded. We have two legislators that represent us who could add this, or we should push them to fund this particular nursing program. I don't think it's appropriate for the city to be funding classroom personnel at the college. I question that Minskew would build a state-of-the-art lab and then not fund a position to use the lab and teach. I know that one of the problems at the college when they did have a nursing program was accreditation. We could still have those same problems and that is one of the reasons why that program did get moved. And then lastly, I think, before I even vote on this, I would have to know, we are not in the healthcare industry, the county is. We aren't, though. And I would want to know from the healthcare industry, that would be the hospital that has $11 million of local money from our citizens to sitting there, and Good Samaritan and Essentia, what they are going to contribute to training a workforce that will work in their industry. I want to know what their contribution is gonna be. Lastly, I don't think, when we say 50-50 with the county and city, the city's tax base is one-fourth of the county's, so when we chip in $20,000, or when the county chips in $20,000, the equivalent...when we chip in $20,000, that's like $5,000 to them as far as burden on the taxpayers. So it is not a 50-50 arrangement, really. It's a lot more of a push for us, a lot more of a burden for us to be matching the county at every turn. at every turn. So number one, I think it's too rich. Number two, before I can support this, I need to know what the industry is going to do. And I will also point out that when Boise wanted an apprenticeship program at the college, they didn't come to the city council and ask for funding for classroom personnel, they funded it. So I say to the healthcare industry in this community, what are you going to contribute? Before we go to the property taxpayers of International Falls, who are pressed at every turn. Further, when you look at the healthcare industry, it takes up 30% of our GDP. We contribute all the time through healthcare premiums, which are very expensive, run a great, a high percentage of people's income. We contribute through the Medicare tax, and we contribute through charity. So now you're asking me to get into the game of contributing through property taxes. I have a problem.
Counselor Drouba.
Can I ask a question? Do we have, do we still have that $60,000 sitting in the Economic Development Fund from 2015, from the EDA, the money that was transferred from the park lease?
The Economic Development Authority did not take any action to move that, so there's monies in that fund. I don't have a specific number for you, but there's monies available.
So maybe, and I'm just throwing this out there as a possibility, maybe the money comes out of there. Because then that's a true Economic Development Fund, in which would be funding economic development needs in our area. So, I mean, and I'm very privy to your thoughts on getting other people involved. I think that that makes sense. I don't know if we need to act on this today. But I do think that it's very important for our area. I really believe that.
And I would agree that, I would be much more comfortable coming out of the Economic Development Funds, because that's what it is. But another way to look at this, too, what if School District 361 comes here looking for money, for money they've lost in enrollment dollars for students that have gone to Rainy River for open enrollment? How do we say no to that? What, they come looking for money?
I didn't realize this was going to be on the agenda tonight. However, I feel like I need to speak up. As a career counselor at the Workforce Center, part of my job is to fund students who meet low-income requirements or other at-risk areas in technical training programs. The Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training has funded many of the nursing students at Rainy River Community College. In addition to that, being on campus, I've had the opportunity to work with numerous students in the nursing program, one-on-one. And I can tell you right now, we are losing students because we have no direct instruction. They will leave. They are going to Hibbing, they're going to ITASKA, they're going to Northwest Tech, because they don't have it here. There are five students currently in the ITASKA LPN program who are set to start the RN program that we partner with Hibbing Community College. And because we have no direct instruction on campus, they are choosing to wait an entire year to enroll in the Northwest Tech program when they'll be eligible. So it's so bad, they are putting off a year of their education because they don't have that direct instruction. Furthermore, since the day I started at the Workforce Center, over two and a half years ago, there hasn't been a moment when RNs, LPNs, and CNAs haven't been on MinnesotaWorks.net. The entire county is looking for nurses. We cannot fill those positions. To me, this is a no-brainer, whether it's the city or the EDA that funds it. At some point, we need to look at getting the college an instructor. We are losing these students. They are going to other communities and spending their money. It's something we need. Thank you for your time.
Sharing that with us, Alyssa. The nursing program had to leave because the instructors, while they were certified nurses, they did not have a master's. And in order to have a program that is accepted, you have to have a master's degree in nursing. And so the students have been, as Alyssa said, they've been under the ITASKA program. Some have been leaving here to go to other colleges. The partnership that you have before us has asked Essentia and Rainy Lake Medical Center to also contribute $20,000 each. They are also, the partnership has made application to the Department, U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Minnesota Job Skills Partnership for additional funds to try to fund the project for three years. Hopefully getting it off the ground. In that time, we would be asking Minskew to pick this up, securing the funding through the state budget. I think the monies that's coming back from the Voyage Forward is money that was used for economic development. I don't have a problem whether it comes from the Economic Development Fund or the monies this year that are left over from Voyage Forward. Either of them would be acceptable. I would just like to see us support this program and keep it going at the college.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question on this? What is the projected total funding from all the partners and who are the partners? It's not really clear here. Twenty thousand, so your total pot of money is going to be what?
Well, we're asking $20,000 from at least four entities right now, and we are hoping that we are able to secure some additional funds from the Department of Agriculture. Don't know exactly what they will fund at this time. And further, from the Minnesota Job Skills Partnership, we met with them two weeks ago, and they said that they believe that they could, with some local funding here, be able to share some dollars with us in hopes of having a little over $300,000 for the salary and a little bit of marketing money for the program.
Three, so what is the annual cost of a nursing instructor? Hundred grand K?
Somewhere, I don't know what they're paid, but it'd be somewhere in that area, yes.
You know, I guess, what I really stumble on, and I understand we probably need this, and I would love to say yes to this, it's just, it seems so irregular that we would be doing this, that we're not going through the channels of our legislative representatives and saying, "Look, we need healthcare support up here. We're a remote community, and you need to fund the program up here." Why are we coming to local government and asking that? I just am nonplussed about that. Has the college, I'd like to know, has the college pursued that avenue? What's been the result? What have been the conversations? Have we reached out to Senator Bach and Representative Ekland? Those are questions that I would need answered before I just say yes to this. What rocks have been turned over at Rainy River Community College in the leadership to fund the nurses? This is what they are supposed to do in administration, is figure out how to run programs, right? Not come to elected local officials and have them figure it out. That's what we're doing. We're figuring out how to staff the college. Why?
Well, let me, just one moment. Let me try to respond to that, Counselor Jacksaw. The state legislature is in the middle of its biennium. They won't be working on budget again for another year. And the college will be pursuing that. However, to secure someone to take such a position would be very, very difficult, even with just a three-year commitment. You know, most people don't want to take a job for just three years and then be out on the street. And so we certainly are looking to have that continue with monies budgeted through the state legislature to Minskew for the position. But in order to get it off the ground and try to give some security to a person who would take such a position, we're looking for those monies for the next three years. Welcome back.
You can just sit up here.
No, it's okay. Just in response to you, Cynthia, it's, I agree with what the mayor's saying, that was my point exactly. Going to our state representatives is going to take too long. Quite frankly, this is do or die right now. We need this nursing program to be up and running. We need it for our students, we need it for our economy, we need it to sustain Rainy River Community College. I completely understand where you're coming from, and as a taxpayer, I really appreciate what you have to say and your input. But we need this program, and we need it to be successful, and right now it is not. These students are struggling. And if we can, to me, the city coming on board with it is us voyaging forward. It's us diving into this in collaboration with all of our other local entities and doing exactly as we've pledged. You adopted a resolution at the last city council meeting. I think it's time for us to dig in and move forward and start being a part of something bigger. Let's take care of our own community. Let's put some funding in it. That's all I got to say for now. I might be back. Thank you.
If you're ready, I'll make a motion supporting this for the discussion.
You have a motion from Counselor Drouba to do that?
Oh, it's been so long, I forgot.
I just want to say, I'd like to have more information from the administration at the college. I tried to call the administration today, no one was there, so I just have, anyway.
You did call my cellphone today. I'm glad you didn't call the jail administrator's number, he might not have been right there either.
In my opinion, and it's only my opinion, this is very similar to how we fund BACUS. This is similar on how we fund the Friends Against Abuse. It's, well, we give them money every year for their annual budget, this is three years and done. And this is going to be a direct economic impact on our community. We should have students coming in. I'm not saying anything negative on those other programs. What I'm saying is, you said, "Why would we do this?" It seems pretty similar to me. Am I correct that colleges not offer? I mean, it's no different to me to try to fund and get students in here.
May I respond?
Please.
The community centers, there's lots of precedents with other cities throughout the state for funding recreation and community centers. It is point to one city that is funding classroom instruction at a community college. I don't know of any. But, you know, there's plenty of precedents for community centers, which is really, the BACUS is the center of our community for activities. There's plenty, I mean, the Friends Against Abuse has a direct working relationship with the police. But the college, I mean, we, the nursing program, how does that fit into city government? We are not in social services, we are not in healthcare services. The county board is, but not the city council.
We're a member of KITA, and this is KITA's position. And I just, I'm going to leave it at that. I mean, this has been brought up through the correct agencies with an advisory board that thought that this is a good idea.
Because I was wavering when this all come up, and, but when you do start thinking about it, if there are 24 students, that's students that stay in town. And if we can have 24 students in a program that can help keep the college survive for other people with other classes, I get the big picture in for three years, especially if we'll take, I'd say, part of the motion is, any money we get left over from the ARDC grant goes towards this for this year, for sure. And then we'll have to do some creative budgeting when this time comes. But I think the long-term, and Alyssa's right, we did start this whole Voyage Forward program. We want people to get on board and support it. Maybe we are the first ones. Then there's precedents for other places, but a precedent has to be set at the first place. First, maybe will be others. Yes, I've changed my mind, and I'm in support of this on the council.
Can I amend my motion to add that the monies for 2016 would come out of the leftover money from the ARDC?
Your motion is to amend?
I amend my motion to where the money comes from.
Or do we want to handle that as a separate motion? We can have it the same one if you want to do that.
I would just have it the same one.
Okay. So you want to add to the motion that the funds would come from the leftover Voyage Forward ARDC funds? Second, I would certainly concur with that. Further discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And although yes, motion is carried and contribution will be approved. Thank you. Item number five under New Business is the Committee of the Whole recommendation to approve the agreement for firefighting services between the City of International Falls and the Rural Fire Protection Association. Again, want to thank the counselors for being at the Committee of the Whole meeting for the discussions, the city administrator and the fire chief, the members of the Rural Fire Protection Association. The agreement that we have come to is to continue for five additional years. And presently, for the past six years, the association has paid the city $125,000 a year. That would continue for the balance of this year. It would increase to $126,000 in 2017, and $1,000 for each year thereafter for the five years. And I think that brings us up to $130,000. And so that is the agreement. It has to be approved also by the Board of Directors of the Rural Fire Protection Association. But I would ask the council at this time for approval of that agreement.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kayler to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drouba. Discussion on the motion or the agreement.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Well done by everyone, thank you.
Well done, when I, as you saw, when I left for tornado Thursday there, I wasn't so sure there was going to be an agreement made that day. So congratulations, and thank you for getting that done.
Well, everyone contributed. Well, did the attorney, the Fire Protection Association. Very good discussions and...
And I do think it will, it benefits both, very much so.
Mr. Mayor, I would pass on that the attorney did send a complimentary email back and wanted me to commend everybody on the city council for your willingness to work and be flexible. And he acknowledged that it probably wasn't the agreement that both sides wanted individually, but that's part of the art of compromise, is getting something that ultimately will work for both parties. And he was very complimentary of the fire chief, as well as the city council, and appreciative that you were willing to work with their board. And as you pointed out, their board still needs to take action on it. But he asked me to pass on their appreciation.
Thank you. Counselor Drouba.
I wasn't with the city when we did the last negotiation, but it seemed like it was a little bit tense. We did have a couple of tense points, but it wasn't in the paper. And we were able to come to a negotiation, and I walked out thinking that we did okay, but I wasn't happy. And I think they felt the same way, and that's the best negotiation there is. So I appreciate everyone that came that day, and Counselor Briggs and Ken, and Chief Manasa from the last year. So thank all of you guys.
Further discussion. Question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and the agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number six under New Business is to approve a letter of support for the International Voyage snowmobile club's effort to establish a snowmobile bridge at the proposed Highway 11 East overpass over the CN Railroad. Your pleasure with sending that letter to our legislators, as well as copies to the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kayler.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the letter. Question on the motion or the letter? Question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and the letter is approved. Thank you. Item number seven is a resolution approving application to conduct an off-site gambling for the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association, conducting a raffle at the Elks Lodge on June 18, 2016.
From the resolution?
Motion by Counselor Drouba.
Second.
Counselor Kayler. Discussion on the resolution or the motion? Question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Falls Elks Lodge 1599 to conduct the raffle on August 12, 2016. Falls Elks Lodge 1599 to conduct the raffle on August 12, 2016.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba to adopt the resolution. Question on the motion, the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and resolution is adopted, approving the permit. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Falls Bass Championship to conduct a raffle at Smokey Bear Park on August 27, 2016.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the premises permit application for the International Voyage Snowmobile Club to conduct gambling at the Viking Bar.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to adopt the resolution?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and permit to conduct gambling is approved. Thank you. Item number 11, consider recommendation of the Residential Commercial Building Advisory Committee to establish and fund a neighborhood cleanup program for 2016.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I meant to pull that because we are going to, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to give everyone on the council an update as to what's happening. We are, I'd like to correct, number one, the cost of this process is nowhere near thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. We have worked out the details, thought we had an understanding with environmental services. What we propose to do is divide the city up into five neighborhoods and require tipping service fees, we can't pay for everything, which would involve special items and there's a whole schedule of fees that the customer would pay regardless of whether they contributed on the day of the cleanup or whether they brought it at their will to the transfer station. The garbage itself, truck itself, we've researched it extensively with people that know something about collecting garbage in the city, that it would be one truck, probably less than that, and the tipping fees are 440 per truck. And what we worked out with friends is that they would pay for more than half of that. So at the end of the day, you're looking at about $1,000 to do five days of neighborhood cleanups, not thousands and thousands of dollars as it was reported in the paper. But rather than present it today, and I, that's, that was reported in the paper as the county board saw the problem, yeah, okay? So I didn't mean to disparage the accuracy of the reporting. It is not at that cost though and I wanna make everybody aware of that fact. But secondly, we are going to meet with the Voyage Forward Destiny Driver for countywide beautification. We want to support that process and rather than bringing the city off on its own with this neighborhood cleanup process, we want to engage with. So we're stepping back and members of the committee will be meeting with the Voyage Forward Destiny Driver team concerning the beautification of Koochichin County on April 27th at 6:00 PM at BACUS. So that is why I'm pulling it from the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Move to item 12. Approve the revised professional and technical services contract number 103530 with the State of Minnesota for hazardous materials, emergency chemical assessment team services provided through the International Falls Fire Department. Your pleasure with the services contract.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the contract?
Has the city attorney reviewed this?
Just briefly, the really, the city council has already approved this agreement. The state inadvertently put the wrong title on the contract previously, so according to the fire chief, there are, there's no substantive changes to it at all other than the title of the contract. So it was actually something that we had acted on last year.
Oh, okay.
Further discussions or questions? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and the technical service contract is approved with the new title. Thank you. Item 13 is approve the appointment of the 2016 seasonal employees for Public Works and Administrative Department.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the hiring of those employees as listed.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion on the motion or the appointment of those employees?
I just have a question and that is that Human Resources, and I'm, since I'm the chair, should, but, ask the question myself. Is this, we need to discuss this at some point though, is, huh?
Just you and?
Yeah, just me and me, yeah. Not me, Brian and Ken. If this would, and Dennis, if this is the best way to approach our busy time, is there a better way? That's, that's my question. We're certainly not gonna change our process this year, but I think we need to look at
Program that's been going on for decades, but that doesn't mean it can't be looked at. Thank you. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and appointment of seasonal employees is approved. 14 is the hiring of a street water commissioner, setting the wage and benefits. And have the, the's recommendation, the evaluation committee of Gary Skolman, the Public Works Director, Betty Burkston, the Deputy City Administrator, and the City Administrator Ken Anderson, and recommending Mr. Ted Brokaw be hired as the street water commissioner to replace Dennis Johnson effective June the 3rd. Is that the correct date?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. His last day of work will be May 27th. I'll be taking the last week of vacation, so effectively his retirement is, Dennis's retirement is June 3rd, Friday. His last day of work will be May 27th and the committee's recommending that Mr. Brokaw be appointed as a street water commissioner to work with Dennis effective tomorrow at 8:00 AM.
Effective April 19th. That is the recommendation of the evaluation committee? Motion to approve that hiring?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to approve the hiring of Mr. Ted Brokaw as the street
Second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the hiring?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment. As we indicated in the memo that we provided, interviewed a number of people, the evaluation committee felt that all the candidates that we interviewed were capable of filling this position and based on the comprehensiveness of Mr. Brokaw's application, I think my own personal opinion is he was somewhat inspiring in some of the comments that he made and he seems to be very motivated and had a very complete and thorough application that he submitted with letters of reference and, so that's why he ultimately was the candidate of choice for all three of us. But any of the people that we interviewed were capable of fulfilling the duties of the position. I think it's, we had some internal candidates as well as some people from outside city employment and we interviewed all of them and I think that they were all very capable of fulfilling the job duties and responsibilities and always somewhat humbling to see that people are still interested in working in, in local government and in public service and it's a demanding job. This particular position has to take phone calls 24/7, visit sites during water main breaks and other kinds of accidents or damaged infrastructure and so it's a, it's a long-term commitment. It's a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week commitment and I was pleased to see that there was the number of people that wanted to do that kind of work, applying and it's unfortunate that only one person can be the winning candidate, but it's not a reflection on any of the other people that applied, so I just want the council. As an evaluation committee, we're very pleased with the people that applied and the capabilities that they showed.
Further discussion or questions with regard to the appointment of, hiring of the street water commissioner?
Yes, I have, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would, I would support the committee's recommendation, having nowhere else to really go, but I understand Ted runs a business and you're saying this is a 24-hour, seven commitment. Was that a discussion? How, I mean, I just wonder about capacity. I'm concerned about that.
Well, this clearly would have to be the, the top priority of this particular individual. I mean, he, he doesn't own the other companies. I believe his wife owns the company, but he does work on a day-to-day basis with those and this has to be a priority and I'm confident that he'll make it a priority and there won't be any conflict between those other businesses and what he's gonna be doing as a commissioner. Interestingly, I think that's the applicants that owned other businesses.
I, and obviously everybody knows, I know Ted and I know he's committed to the job and I know the other people also that applied for the job. I know they're very well qualified and can handle the job, but I do know Ted's passion and commitment to the city and his other job. He does it now with his wife and his other's employees. He knows what he's getting into. I don't think there'll be any problem with him having his other business.
Will have a little bit of a snowball effect in that his position would then be open. Is that also a supervisory position? The grounds maintenance position?
Mr. Mayor, typically it is not, other than for summer help. You can see from the previous requests that you had that there was, I think, three positions that we have designated to assist in the building grounds area and that would be Benjamin Erickson, Tyler Richards, and Kylie Clark. And in the past, for those summer help personnel, Ted has supervised them, assigned duties and responsibilities on a day-to-day basis for different projects throughout the, throughout the city.
I certainly would agree with Councilor Kayler. I think that Ted is a dedicated, dedicated employee and certainly takes care of things here at the, the buildings. Has been moving us forward with regard to energy and lighting in the, in this area. I know that he's attended a number of seminars and conferences to learn that better, so I think that he'll do very well. Further questions or discussion? Motion by Councilor Kayler, second by Councilor Drogba is to hire Mr. Ted Brokaw as the street water commissioner at the starting wage of $57,148 in addition to the standard benefits policy that the city has effective April the 19th of 2016. No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried and hiring is approved. Thank you. Item number 15 is to approve the revised position descriptions within the Administration Department and authorize the posting and advertising to hire an office clerk and a finance officer.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to approve the revised position descriptions and the advertising to hire those two positions.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the descriptions?
I would ask the city administrator to educate the council and the public.
Just a brief summary, Mr. Mayor and council, of what's being proposed here. We've, in the Administration Department, we've elected to revise the format of the job descriptions and so those were included in your packet and it included positions such as the deputy city administrator position, which would have some duties shifted, the accountant position, administration support specialist position, a new finance officer position, and then an information systems administrator and administrative assistant. That position is currently just titled administrative assistant, but the bulk of that person's position, which is Don Kosak, is spent doing information technology, computer maintenance and, and issues of that nature. So this revised job description reflects what he's actually doing in that position as well as the administrative assistant duties that were part of his original job description when he was hired a number of years ago. And then an office clerk position and the office clerk position is a position in the local 49 union. We haven't had a job description for the position, but it's been there in title, or at least not, we revised the job description, there was one. There hasn't been somebody in that position for just under five years. And so what we tried to do with this, this effort is, number one, revise the job descriptions to reflect more accurately the actual duties that are being performed. But the key issue of this initiative is really to adjust with the retirement of the accountant, which is Mary Pouts, is adjust the duties and responsibilities and elevate those duties and responsibilities into a new position called finance officer. And part of those duties and responsibilities will assume some of the work that's been done by the deputy city administrator with bank reconciliations and, and other kinds of work on a monthly basis that she's been doing related to finance. Also continue with the payroll, but really to try and meet the needs of some of you as councilors have had in terms of trying to do more with financial analyses and reports than what we've done in the past. And I think we've indicated in, in this memo that we provided for you is that there's a number of projects coming up, one of which is we've been directed at, at our request, you've allowed us to move forward and separate the water and sewer funds. There's gonna be a considerable amount of time trying to identify what assets belong in which fund and we think we need to have somebody with a different skillset in that position to assist us with that. We'll be working with the auditors to assist in that, so that's part of the duties and responsibilities. And so just a number of things to try and elevate that finance officer position and quite frankly, with the comprehensive planning process that we're gonna be sending out RFPs to do this, this coming, starting this year and probably working into next year, the airport turmoil project that we hope moves forward, it's a roughly, it's a considerable project, $12, $13 million. Most of that work is approved initially by the Airport Commission, but as fiscal agent, most of the finances, actually all the documentation, accounts payable, are run through the city council and so we see that this person in this new position is gonna be, help us to oversee all of that, that financial activity that runs through the, the office, both for, as a fiscal agent as well as directly for city projects. So essentially what we're proposing and what your, this motion is to do is adjust and approve the revised job descriptions for the positions I listed and authorize the staff to post internally the office clerk position and then advertise for the finance officer position, which would be a new position replacing the accountant and the person in that position, as I indicated, Mary Pouts is retiring effective May 27th. I guess the final bit of information I would pass on is I did pass on an email to the local 49ers last week. They have some concerns and so I'll be meeting with them with the deputy city administrator on Friday and so we're gonna have a discussion about what any of their concerns might be, but we're still looking for council authorization at the meeting tonight.
Council Jacksaw?
I am thinking we really need a finance officer, based on being a counselor now for eight years. And one of the things I'd like, one of the perennial audit findings we get is that we have all these adjusting entries to do the auditors. have all these adjusting entries to do, the auditors have to do, to bring us to the modified cash basis on our financial statements. I would look to have monthly reports that have a clear cutoff date so that we know when we look at something that this is the complete picture. And secondly, that if we have current accruals on the books so that we get a full picture. And I believe that having someone of the caliber of a finance officer can bring that, along with, you know, a real sense of control and ownership over the software reporting system and the capabilities of what that system has that we're not fully utilizing now. So I think it's money well spent. We may save money on the audit because we won't have as many adjusting entries to do every year. And if we, as we move forward with a comprehensive plan, we may have to do some computations as far as returns and cost and benefit analysis. So, you know, I support, I support the administrator's vision on this.
I would certainly add my strong support to this effort. I think that I've watched a number of communities the past few years that have went to a finance officer. Proctor comes to mind. I believe Hermantown had a position, and they just had an opening there and fill that. So I think that, you know, other communities have moved in that direction. Not saying that we're behind the curve at all, but I think as Councilor Jacksaw pointed out, there has been a need for additional information to completely understand where we are with regard to our funds. And so I certainly support the administration's direction in how we're moving here. I do have one little nit, and we can take it up later. It's nothing that I would consider very large, but having read through all of the job descriptions, I was wondering about the finance officer maintaining the webpage. It's in the middle of that position description. I didn't know for sure if the finance officer might have the skill to maintain a webpage, but maybe, maybe so.
Good point.
I don't know.
I don't know if that belongs there either. In fact, I don't think it does.
It's just a nit, so, something to, something to talk about later. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes. Motion is carried and revised position descriptions are approved and the advertising to hire an office clerk and finance officer are approved. Thank you. We'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads and city administrator.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing the absence of the city attorney and, if you're not here this evening, I know the fire chief is at a training in Moorhead, and I'm not sure where the police chief was off to.
He had a medical appointment today.
Oh, did he? Okay, thank you. Deputy Administrator? Thank you. We'll move to reports of the council, mayor, and boards and commissions. I thought it was in writing, and so we have that. Special meeting tomorrow at 2:00. If you're not, I'll give you a copy of that and print that out after that meeting with our attorney. Further to come, under council committees and boards and commissions, we'll go to the audience. Is anyone in the audience that has a question or further statement to the council at this And for your attendance, reminder that the Borderland Humane Society is having a fundraiser on April 29th. The next city council meeting is at Monday, May the 2nd, regular city council meeting. We have the special meeting tomorrow at 2:00. With that, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing?
Yes.
It just popped in my mind.
All right.
Since we have a cable commission and we have a relationship with the PEG channel over there, I wanted to mention that they're going to have an open house on April 26th to showcase their studio, and the public is welcome to attend. That is on, the 26th would be a week from tomorrow at Bacchus.
Mayor and Chair, I would adjourn this meeting, and we will then have the International Falls Economic Development Authority meeting. Thank you.